Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call the Committee of the Whole to order. The clerk please call the board.
Morewka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the July 23rd, 2018 Committee of the Whole. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as presented? If not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Parker.
Bowden?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Present.
Morewka?
Present.
Okay. Any public comment on anything that's not on the Committee of the Whole agenda? Okay, we'll move on to item five. Mr. Osmalski, 628 Howard Street, discussion regarding a service line leak. If you could step up to the mic, please.
I have a water leak, service leak in front of my house. It's been there since March 8th. Slowly leaking into the curb, into the gutter. Started with maybe a two-foot spot. Slowly went to a 10-foot spot and the next thing you know, it was going all the way down to the sewer drain, which is two and a half houses down. I did call the village right away. When I first noticed it, they said they'd come out and look at it. Didn't hear anything from them a couple of weeks later. When it came along, you know, to the sewer, I did call again and they came out. And Jim came out and says he wanted to take a test and see if it was really a water leak or not. He said that it did not have any chlorine at the time. So he didn't believe it was a water leak, but it hadn't rained for a month. So he says he wanted to wait and see. If it was a water leak, it wasn't bad. He just wanted to wait and see how it went. So we've just kind of left that. Continue to flow slowly and grow a little bit more each time. Because at the end of July, my wife called back, talked to Jim and asked if they're going to fix it. And he says, well, it's, we wait for Aqua to fix it, wait for Aqua to take over, they'll fix the whole thing otherwise. If there's an ordinance in it, you'd be responsible for it completely. Kind of concerned about that because I do understand that there's supposed to be an ordinance, that it is my, you know, my responsibility. And I find understanding why it would be my responsibility when it's not even on my property or at least we don't know that for sure yet as of now. So let's probably dug it up. But, so the B-box, I would believe towards the street, because the main is actually on the other side of the street. I don't understand how that could be my responsibility. But, besides that, we go on and... As of August 5th, water became a little bit worse. Well, yeah, it became worse. One of the Peatones police officers stopped by, looked at it, and he made a report himself to have the water company come out and Parker come out and look at it again because it was getting pretty bad. August 6th, Jim came out, said he wanted to turn off the water at the B-box and see if it was indeed from the B-box to the main or from the B-box to my house. He took the cap off. He couldn't get it turned off because he said there was so much sand built up from the water coming out. And that's where the water's coming out. It's coming out right where the B-box is. So he says he couldn't do anything yet. I leave it for now and wait and see. It's gotten a little bit worse each time. I believe I gave Donna pictures.
Yeah.
You know what it looks like. Hadn't heard from Jim for a little while, so I talked to Donna to come make sure that the board is aware of this. Now, we did speak, I did speak to Jim last week and he said he was going to look into seeing how much it would be for a quote to get it fixed.
And I did speak to Jim today about this and he did say that he was still waiting, you know, for some pricing.
Or numbers, yes.
And that he was going to get ahold of you as soon as he got those numbers.
In the meantime, he did say that if we were to replace it, that the village would take care of the B-box and the sidewalk. Now, just to let you also know that, I don't know if the pictures kind of show that, but I did replace the driveway five years ago. So it is a brand-new driveway. And that's what has my concern. If I did replace it five years ago, okay, I could throw, you know, throw it out. You know, I already put it into it once, all the way to the street and included in the sidewalks. So anyway, we're basically waiting for Jim right now to come back with some numbers. If I can hold out till October 1st and wait for Aqua to take care of it, then that's, that's the solution that we prefer to go with. But just in case it gets worse or if it actually bursts completely and there's no water in the house, then we'll have to do something about getting it fixed. And that's where I'm kind of looking for the board to consider helping out, is any way that we can to help get that resolved.
Now, I'll follow up again with Jim tomorrow. So I just spoke to him briefly, you know, this afternoon and he was working on some numbers and maybe, I don't know, Public Works is going to have a committee meeting any time in the near future.
Have they determined which side of the B-box?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I didn't have that conversation with Jim today. He didn't, he didn't tell me. What he had told me right now, as far as he was concerned, as far as he knew, it was the homeowner's responsibility. It was on whatever side, you know, that was, but...
How long has this been going on?
That's a lot of water.
March 8th.
But that would have to be the first thing that you'd be determined for sure, wouldn't it?
I would think so, yeah.
And then we know his responsibility.
He can't get in there at all.
I...
I know, I know you're not the water guy, but...
He said he could not get in there at all. Because the water is bubbling up from underneath there. It's probably loose and then you kind of sand and put it right there.
Yeah, I think there's ways that they can shut it down.
I'll, I'll talk with Jim in the morning, you know, and try to get some more information.
If it doesn't show, the buffalo box is surrounded by his driveway. Like it's in his driveway. And so it means he's got to destroy the concrete that's there to be able to get down. So they just can't go in like they would on a normal house, dig up next to it and trench down to it to be able to see where they've got the leaks. This one means he's got to do concrete injection. Actually, at this point, the concrete's got to be replaced anyway, you know? And if we go too late, we're going to have a possibility of a problem. Because I've been out there too looking at it. But there could be a problem with freezing.
Right.
He can't go and protect it with salt because it's, if you remember Jim Clankett, when he fired the shotgun and he blew up the water and had the oil coming out, well, that's what he's got. He's bubbling crude. Our water is bubbling up now at this point. So...
As a, just, you know, when it came to the Committee of the Whole, that was the first that I had heard about it. I guess first any of us had heard about it.
That's what I wanted to do.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. So let us, let us follow up with Jim, okay? And I'll talk to him tomorrow and try to get more information for the board and we'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen.
Sorry about that.
All right, number six, Mr. and Mrs. Amaskane?
Amaskane? Amaskane.
Okay. Discussion regarding Distinctive Home Builders and Front Side Yard Landscape.
Yes, hi. My name is Adam Amaskane. We just built with Distinctive like a few months ago in the local state. And when we signed the contract, it said seating was included and final grading. And then they seeded late in the site like in May, but it was all weeds. They never told us they seeded. We never got an email, call, or knock on the door. So when I saw the seed, like it watering, watering, nothing is going, just weeds. One day, Bob, the inspector here, he stopped by. He told me, when I see her today working, did you know that Distinctive's supposed to sod the front, the sides? And I said, no, I didn't know. And then when I contacted them, they refused to talk to us. They, a few days now, harassing them. We sent like four emails and two calls. And we have some, two other people have the same issue with them. But they agreed to either sod their house, their yard, or give them compensation. Only one's not getting anything, so...
And so I've asked Tom Pankey from Safe Built, who is our inspector organization, to be here tonight and he's got a little more information that maybe he can share with the board and maybe answer a question for you. Tom, do you want to?
Sure. So hopefully I met the entire board. Tom Pankey, I'm the village's building inspector. We contracted through Safe Built. Village ordinance requires that all new houses in the new subdivisions have to have their front yard sodded. We've had two of the three houses that he's referring to, the homeowners didn't oversee and water properly and it looks like a field. And there's no established grass there at all. And that's what the board was trying to avoid. They wanted to, at least the front to look a little more established. A lot of times, we can't get the grading in before the house is completed and we want occupancy. So what we have done is we allow them to post a landscape bond and sign an agreement. We do the same thing for the city sidewalk and street trees and parkway side to make sure that that's going to be put in. Once I grab that occupancy permit, we've no longer, have no hammer to make sure that work is completed. So we do have a landscape agreement that must be signed and then they have to post a bond guaranteeing that that work will be completed. Because I've already granted the occupancy permit and once you get that, then nobody can't go tell them, you've got to move out now. So it's our way of letting them move into their new home and get the village guaranteed that we're going to get that work done. We've been in discussions with Distinctive, or I have and so does staff, regarding a few houses that were seeded instead of sodged and we won't accept that. They came back and, you know, we have agreements on all three of the lots. Two of the lots, Distinctive Homes, signed the agreement. They claim, and I think you got a copy of their letter, they claim that in all their sales contracts, it says that they're providing seed, which, you know, we want sod. We don't care what they do with their personal contracts. There's going to be sod in that front yard. Two of the lots, Distinctive Homes, actually signed the landscape agreement. On this gentleman's lot, he signed the agreement that stated, I acknowledge that there must be sod in the front yard. And he posted a check for the bond. Distinctive Homes is now saying, he knew about it in advance, actually all three of them knew about it, but since they signed the contract on the first two, the agreement on the first two, that they're kind of stuck with that. But they're pretty much saying that, you know, if he has an issue, he needs to have his attorney contact Distinctive's attorney. We as the village, as far as I'm concerned, are out of the picture. All I have is a, an agreement that is signed and a cash bond that has been posted guaranteeing that the work will be done. Who actually does it? That's their contract between the buyer and the seller. And I think, you know, we're really out of the picture as far as that's concerned. We just will not release the bond until somebody puts the sod in. On two of the lots, I've told Distinctive, they're responsible, they signed the agreement. If they want to go after their homeowner and say, hey, that wasn't included in your purchase, that's up to them and their attorney. We as the village just want to guarantee that those three houses have sod and whoever signed that agreement is responsible for getting it installed. And unfortunately, that's where we stand in the situation. We have to have some provision to allow occupancy of houses when the work isn't completed on the exterior work. Can't make them wait all winter until spring to move into their new houses. And this is the most acceptable way, but we do make sure that we have that bond in place on every single house. And so unfortunately, that's the situation that stands really now, a civil issue between buyers and the seller.
How come, how come the builder posted two of the three but didn't post the third?
I have, maybe he can answer why he came in then, but supposedly it's in their sales contract stating that all they do is seed. And they did put seed down, which to me is kind of a waste of money.
No, the seed, putting in mine was not even seed. I can, if you have somebody come and see my house, it's all weeds. I spent two days sodding the street.
We don't, we don't really care if they did seed or didn't seed. The agreement says you must have sod installed. The agreement was signed stating, I acknowledge that it has to be sod. And that's where we stand.
So I guess the position that what Tom is saying, or what he's telling the board is, you know, I've got, I've got the landscape escrow agreements here for the three properties. So for, for two of the properties, Distinctive signed those and took responsibility. For the third, it was signed by one of you, either...
I know, it's not, but here it doesn't say, if you said watering, it doesn't say I have to...
It says, "Two fronted trees required by the Peatones subdivision ordinance must be planted and all front and side yards must be sodded and all rear yards seeded or sodded for the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The applicant must deposit a landscape escrow with the village if landscaping is not completed at the time of occupancy. Landscaping must be completed within nine months of certificate of occupancy or the village may utilize the escrow to complete the work. The amount of escrow has been determined by the village engineer to be $3,650. It shall be the responsibility of the applicant to request a refund of the landscape escrow fund amount. And if no such request is received within three years from the date of deposit was made, the village shall be entitled to use any amount remaining and sub-landscape escrow for general corporate purposes." That's what the agreement that you signed says.
I understand that one, but it says there are two fronted trees required. They planted the trees and they seeded. But I don't...
But I understand. But, so the part of the escrow that has not been completed is the sod. So with this letter, what this letter is saying is, within nine months that sod is not done, you have said to the village by signing this, that we can use this escrow and go in and put that sod in.
Yeah, but in the ordinance of the village, it says the builder is responsible for sodding, not us.
But you signed, the problem is, you signed this agreement. This is a civil issue at this point in time. We as a village cannot go after the builder.
I know, but it was going to enforce the code. And if you put a code, okay, this is A, and B, and C, you have to follow. And he's not following. Why do I have to pay the price for him not following the rule? And it's not the issue now. Now, he's agreeing to pay out to people, but why were the only ones included in this? They have the same contract, they have the same builder, and we decided late in, we moved in in April, so he couldn't see where sod in. They seeded, they never told us. We just sprayed like two bags of cheap seed. It's all weeds. Somebody can come in and see it. I spent the last two days sodding it. It cost me $1,500. I ain't doing labor, me and my son. So why should they include all this? Why they're just...
The only thing I can do at this point in time is to give this to our attorney and have him review it and see if he agrees, you know, if we have any kind of, you know, teeth in this. But at this point in time, from what I'm getting from our inspector, by you signing this agreement, it became your responsibility.
I understand by, right. It is a standard, though. And we moved in, we bought a house in $340,000. And they can, and if you had a lot of seed in the driveway, I don't care about sod.
Again, this is, this is a civil, this is between you and the builder. That's not between the village and the builder.
I understand, but the code, what does the code say for this? It says the builder is responsible for sodding the front, the side, and seeding the back. But in the seeding, it's not even good.
But it looks like, what I'm seeing from the builder, the Distinctive builder, he said that the following, it says the sod landscaping and trees are not included in the contract price for the home, if I'm reading it correctly. And that your contract further explains that any bond or requirement for sod or landscaping from any municipality lender or entity is a responsibility of the purchaser.
They have?
So you did do it, yes, but it just says that the sod would then be your responsibility.
They never told us that. When we sold us, we threw some contract, it's in here.
My, my recommendation to you is to have your attorney contact their attorney. That's, that's, I will talk to our attorney about this, but we're not going to solve anything else here right now. There's, there's not going to be any other answer coming from this board at this point in time. We can't say anything else right now. We're taking the report that we have from our inspector, okay? We're looking at the paperwork that we have in front of us. Again, I will talk to our attorney about it, but at this point in time, as far as I can see, this is a civil issue.
Can I have somebody at least, inspector from the village, come in, inspector, and tell me this is accepted or not? Because the house is beautiful, this is the...
No, I mean, the only thing that will be, the only thing that will be inspected is when the sod goes in.
Well, that's the problem. If you're going to start the whole thing, it's going to cost me $6,000, $7,000. They sod, there's just a side street, it costs me $1,500,000.
Again, again, that's, that's a civil, that's, that's between you and the builder right now.
I know, but the village has an ordinance. Why, you can just do whatever you want. That the ordinance means you have to follow the rules.
And I will talk to the attorney about that and see what his interpretation of that is, okay?
Tom, we're the only one...
Mayor, this is very similar to our subdivision, excuse me, I'm not standing here. This is very similar to our subdivision ordinance requires all new subdivisions put in municipal sidewalks, street trees, and parkways sod. The developer then says, it makes sense for me to put it in now because the builder's going to tear it up. So when you buy your lot, I put on the sales contract that you now are responsible for the sidewalk and the street trees. It's the same thing. They are accepting the liability of that improvement when they buy the lot. Same thing when we signed that agreement. And it's our only, that agreement is our only way of guaranteeing that the improvement will be put in. We don't care ultimately who puts it in, just that the person that signed it and gave us a deposit is responsible for our work.
How many other owners does Distinctive have going?
Right, right now, this, yet, they do have one more house that's getting close to occupancy, but they're going to sod that.
How many have they built previously? How many have they built previously?
About five, I think. I would say five or six right now.
Did they sod those in the trees?
No. They did, a couple of.
They sodged one.
They did. The owners did. But we, they are now, according to Brian's agreement, to try to resolve it in the future, are going to just add additional amounts to the cost of the house to include sod so that we won't have this issue in the future. Now, what we will have, and one reason why builders don't like putting in sod up front, is that suddenly the sod in, it takes a while for the homeowner to get in and start watering. Next thing you know...
The sod's dead.
Sod's dead. So all we care about as a village is that that front is sodded.
The front or the front and both sides?
Front and side.
And both sides.
Yeah.
Why did you sign that agreement?
They told us, the lady who signed the contract, she said, we do good quality grading and seeding. They never told us about sod, never. And even the seed, that's not the issue. Even the seed, if somebody, if you can all come, always, they've been working two months. Anybody tests by, beautiful house, you look at the wall like, this is a shame.
Maybe the builder can redo the sods. They have to do so.
They don't reply to us. I sent email, we called now, they called us harassing them. Their lawyer sent a letter to our lawyer, says, who am I going to contact? If the village engineer can help me, they can return my call or come to agreement. What should they do then?
The letter states that his attorney should contact their attorney.
Yeah, I think that's probably what you're going to have to do.
They did have, they did have an attorney representing them at the closing.
Well, they should have disclosed that it has to be sodded. Their ordinance rules for the village. If there's a one business here, they have to follow the rules.
So when you signed the, the agreement and gave us the check, what did you think was going to happen?
They told us seeding. It's going to be final grading seed. The final seeding, it's it.
Even though it says sod?
You didn't. Does.
It says it right here.
The, the thing you said, the thing you signed...
The thing you signed said, "Two fronted trees required by the Peatones subdivision ordinance must be planted and the front and side yards must be sodded and all rear yards seeded or sodded for the issuance of certificate of occupancy."
Yes.
That's the document that you signed.
Yes, and what does it say? It says the ordinance of the village is this. And who's responsible, third ordinance to do it? That's the builder.
No, you, because you signed it. Again, you're not going to get any other answer tonight. This is, this is where we are.
Just bring your attention.
And that's fine.
This is resolving this because if not, return our calls, nobody's helping us with this.
And in a letter we just received from Distinctive, it states that your attorney should contact their attorney. So try that.
We tried that. They didn't do anything. They're responsible. So what's the problem, though? We have, how come we have people getting...
Because the other, the other people, they did not sign the landscape escrow. Distinctive signed it. Distinctive signed it.
I talked to them, they signed it. They offered them $1,500 for sod. Some of them are going to take $1,500, some on the other side. We're the only one being punished by this for some reason, I don't know why. So that's why...
And again, that's, that's a, that's a civil thing. That is not...
I understand, obviously civil, and probably this ordinance too, because...
No, the ordinance is the same, the ordinance is the same for everybody. The ordinance is the same for everybody. The problem is, is how your attorney or you handled the closing and handled the landscape escrowing. That's, that's the difference. You put yourself in this position by signing this document. The other people, the other two people, they did not, Distinctive signed those documents.
We got these documents from the village.
I understand.
Why you didn't put in then, the builder is supposed to do this instead of just... I don't see anything that says owner has to sod. You just say trees have to be planted.
We're going in a big circle right now. This is our position. This, this is where it's at.
Well, what's it going to happen then? Do I have to, are you going to look into it or anybody can do something about it?
The only, the only next step that I can take is to talk to the village attorney and see if he has any other opinion. If his opinion is the same as the inspector, then it becomes your responsibility. You either have to sod it or the escrow that you put in will be used to do the sodding.
That's the problem. Even the escrow's not going to cover the sods. It's going to be $6,000, $7,000. Why should they be punished for this?
Well, that, that escrow amount was set by our, I believe, our engineer, so...
No, I understand the escrow. His, his cost cannot exceed the amount that he's got in escrow, is that correct?
Well, it shouldn't. I mean, the escrow was done by an estimate, you know, by the, by the engineer.
Right.
So if his $6,000 price, he's, he's getting, he's getting a high price from a landscaper or something.
No. It's the last...
Again, but that's, that's beside the point. That's, that's where we're at. That's it. I mean, we can't do anything else. Right?
That's a shame, though. If you are in the business doing this stuff, it's a shame.
Item seven, presentations regarding the vacant village administrator position. We have with us tonight, Mr. Mike Peterson?
Mark.
Mark, I'm sorry!
It's okay.
I had that in my head earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the village board. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Mark Peterson. I'm the vice president of WHR USA. It's a firm that provides a variety of consulting services to local governments. The bread and butter of our, our firm is executive recruitment, particularly recruitment of village administrators and managers. And that's why I'm here to talk with you about briefly this evening. I've provided each of you with a folder that has some information on the firm and a little copy of a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not going to bother to walk through. You're perfectly capable of reading. But I'll highlight a couple of things. First of all, WHR was formed back in 2009. a couple of things. First of all, WHR was formed back in 2009. Again, we provide a variety of consulting services, but certainly executive recruitment is one of our primary services. Since formation, WHR has placed between 450 and 500 village administrators and managers throughout the country. Obviously, we're an Illinois firm, so we do a lot of our work in the Midwest and Illinois, but we also have to do work throughout the country on both posts and south. We have 20 associates. I am one of 20. We have performed this work. As far as I'm concerned, I'm an Illinois guy. I was, I've got about 30, well, 35 plus years of experience in local government management, mostly in Illinois. I was in Normal, Illinois, about a half shop for 30 years. I retired in March and joined the firm. And I've been very busy since 2009 and enjoying the work. It's a different one than accustomed to, but I really do enjoy it. We did provide Mayor Cross with a proposal, not three or four weeks ago on-
And the board, the board has that proposal?
They got that proposal on how we might provide some assistance. WHR has a process that we like to use, but with that being said, we are very flexible. The recruitment and selection of a village administrator is likely one of the more important decisions that you'll make as a local elected body. So it's very important that you're comfortable with the process. And our goal here is to provide coordination in that process, as well as professional expertise and guidance throughout the process. In my case, I have many, many contacts throughout Illinois and surrounding states. In advertising the position, I would suggest you that the vast majority of the applicants would come from the Midwest. That's not to say we do a national recruitment. You might get candidates applying from New York, Florida, Texas, California. We know, we find that many of those candidates from other states are, have roots in Illinois. They have family here. They may have been here and wanted to get back to the Midwest. So, but we do, we do a national recruitment process. Before we start, I would sit down with each one of you to talk about what your expectations are of a new village administrator, what skills and attributes and experiences you're looking for. And then we would put together a position profile, a recruitment brochure, and we would advertise on a number of, in a number of publications and even more social media issues. We do a lot of social media outreach. We also maintain a very large database of potential candidates. So in addition to a call for applicants, we would, we can, we can take a variety of parameters that you would suggest, a size and population, experience, location. We can put those into our database, and we can come up with probably 200 to 300 potential candidates that we will reach out to specifically and ask if they would consider coming to this wonderful community to be the village administrator. So, again, it's your process, but we're here. We have a lot of expertise. We have a lot of contacts, and we're here to help you. And our goal at the end of the day is provide you with a pool of excellent candidates from which to select your new village administrator. We are here from the beginning. We are here as long as it takes. If this process takes, typically, it's a 12-week process. If it takes 12 weeks, fine. If it takes 24 weeks, fine. There are times, unusually so, where we go through one process and we don't find the candidate, we go back out again, and that's all part of the deal. We are here, we are here till the bidder ends. Second of all, we do provide a two-year guarantee, which is pretty unusual and pretty spectacular, and that, I think, is testament to the confidence we have in our process. But if we help you select, recruit, select a village administrator, and that individual leaves the village for any reason, two years after the day of hiring, within that period, two-year period, we will come in and conduct a second process for you at no charge, with the exception of reimbursable expenses, primarily advertising expenses. And I say for any reason. It may be that the individual is the administrator that chooses to leave. It may be that the board finds that the fit isn't right and feels a change needs to be made. Heaven forbid if the village administrator gets hit by a bus, something like that, some catastrophic situation. It doesn't matter. We will provide the follow-up process essentially for free, as far as the professional fees are concerned. Our experience is about 1% of our recruitments have to invoke that guarantee. So it doesn't happen very often. So we stand by our process, and we stand by the candidate pool that we presented. We do extensive background checks for you. The last thing you want are surprises. We want you to hire a village administrator. So we do extensive background checks to make sure that we know if there's any potential issues in the past with a particular candidate, that you're gonna know those are fine. So that's a quick overview of our process. And what we do, let me stop there and see if you have any questions that I can address.
Do you want to have questions?
You said the guarantee is for, if we discharge them for cause?
For cause or for not for cause, for any reason. Or if they choose to leave on their own, or if for personal reasons they leave the position for any reason, we will provide that follow-up recruitment.
Basically, another round of recruiting.
Yeah.
Have you had a chance to look at us and, you know, analyze what kind of candidate you'll be able to find?
A little bit, not a whole lot. But I would say you're going to get a mix of candidates here. You're going to get, you probably have a lot called the rising stars, maybe a younger, inexperienced person with maybe as an assistant administrator in another community that sees this as a great opportunity. You will probably also be candidates that I would consider more seasoned managers or administrators with political reasons or looking for a new opportunity, a new challenge. Maybe they've encountered some political headwinds in their own community, and sometimes it's time to move on. So I think you will get a variety of candidates. I think what, what I look at with Peatone is the proximity to the Chicago area is a positive thing. There are, the further downstate you get, the more difficult it is to attract candidates. Here, you've got kind of the best of both worlds. You've got smaller, independent community, yet you're relatively close to the Chicago area. So people that have family considerations, spouse has a work position in the Chicago area, they may find that Peatone is a reasonable commute. And it's an opportunity to experience an independent community, kind of a small-town life that provides a very high-quality life that they may not find in the Chicago metro area. So I think, I think that's our opportunity here. Candidates are gonna look at stability. They're gonna look at stability in the community. They're gonna look at the village board. They're gonna look at, you know, the opportunities, the potential of the community, and you have tremendous potential here for economic development growth. Assume that's something you want. So those are the things that they will, they will seek out. I would say just, again, this is off the top, you're probably looking at a minimum of 30 candidates and probably an maximum of 50 or so. In that 30 to 50 of those, you'll find half of them are unqualified or not sufficiently qualified. What I would hope that we can get 15 to 20 that meet the, meet the minimum qualifications that you're looking for. And then what my job is, I dig into those 15 to 20. And I usually will come to you with a list of maybe 10 to 12, maybe as many as 15, depending. And I would, I would present those to you in a recruitment report with detailed information on each of the candidates. And even at that stage, we do some initial background checks. We do some initial reference checks, so we have an idea of what this person's all about. And I typically interview them via Skype. So I've had the opportunity to spend probably at least an hour with each candidate, asking some questions. So when I bring you a list of, I think are good quality candidates, I've already had a good opportunity to get them, and I feel comfortable. But not only they meet your minimum qualifications, but they're a good fit for the village. From that point, it's up to you to decide if there's ones that look particularly interesting to you. We typically will invite those into the community for a formal interview. That may be probably anywhere from four to six candidates is typical. And sometimes those are all done in one day. I just finished a process in Shorewood, and they interviewed six candidates in one long Saturday. Sometimes boards prefer to spread that out over a period of days. That's entirely up to you. Ultimately, it's your process. I can, I will make recommendations, but it's, we want to make sure that you're comfortable, no matter what, what we may recommend. You've got to be comfortable with the process. So we would start, and you would engage us, from the first thing that I would do was fairly quickly generate a, what we call a recruitment schedule or project schedule. It shows from beginning to end how this is gonna flow, and has general dates in there. So we can all plan ahead. There's a flurry of activity at the beginning where you're all very involved, and then we go through a waiting period during the, once the position is advertised. Now, you won't be doing, but I'll be doing quite a bit of work. I'll be making phone calls. I'll be fielding phone calls. We'll be making direct appeals to candidates. And then we wait till applications close, and then we get busy again, really digging into the candidates and looking at them in detail. And then I will bring to you the recruitment plan, the recruitment report, and that will probably involve a two- to three-hour meeting, where we go through each of these, what I consider the highest-quality candidates in detail. And I'll be very honest with you and frank with you on their strengths and their weaknesses, because I, you know, at the end of the day, you don't want there to be any surprises. And we want that final group that you select from to have, hopefully, be candidates that all are qualified and capable, and it's up to you to find the one that you feel is the best fit for Peatone. That was a much longer-winded answer.
No.
I apologize.
It was a good answer. I appreciate you filling that in.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the board?
So how much do you think your firm's experience would help us find a good candidate as opposed to a couple of years ago, we just did it on our own as far as, you know, advertising, you know, technical journalism stuff? So tell me what difference your firm would make.
Well, I think it does make a difference. But certainly, you can do it on your own, and I've seen village boards have very successful processes on their own. So you're not sitting here telling me, and we're not the only team in town. There are other people that do that. We like what we do. We think we have a good process. The thing, though, I think candidates feel comfortable with WHR. They know we are, we are a very ethical firm. They know our process is above board. We are honest. We have integrity. You know, I think people trust that. They also, I think, if a village hires a firm like WHR, it gives candidates some comfort level that it is a professional process. When the village board is doing it on its own, you just never know. So yeah, I do think, and we do have a stable of people. We have a database that has thousands of names in that we, people we either place or we work with in the past. Like, for example, I'm involved in several recruitments, several, a few right now. There's a lot of people who may be showing up elsewhere that weren't hired, and I'm saying, that's somebody that I think is a really good candidate that I may see as a good fit for Peatone. I'll call them up and say, hey, I've got an opportunity for you. Would you be interested? I think it's a good fit. I think he would be a good candidate. Love to see you apply. So we exercise those contacts. We would try to move this one very quickly, because if we could, I'd love to be able to have something at the IML conference in September. We have a big presence at the IML conference. There's a lot of managers and administrators. They come to that, and they stop by our booth. We have one of the more popular booths, because people know we're recruiting. So we would, that would be a great opportunity for me to hand to potential candidates, hey, here's some information on Peatone. Here's some announcement. We'll do a really nice recruitment brochure that not only provides a lot of information about the community and the position, but we use that as a marketing piece. You know, we're gonna put, we're gonna make this sound like the greatest job on earth. But we also want to be honest. And there's some challenges here. There's, I mean, that's why you hire village administrators. If there wasn't any challenges, you wouldn't need them. But there's some challenges here, and there's some opportunities here. But we try to, it's really a marketing piece for the community. And we love to get that in the hands of candidates who may not even be looking, but they say, oh, this is, sounds interesting. So we got that coming up. We also got the International City, City County Management Association Conference also in late September. And that's another, and that's a national stage, but we have a lot of Midwestern candidates. And again, we're looking nationwide. So it's another opportunity for us to have direct face time with potential candidates and give them information on Peatone. And so my goal would be to try to move this, if you engage us to move this probably a little more quickly than typical, so we can get these documents prepared and in place in time for those conferences, because it's a great opportunity for us to recruit candidates.
Mark, what challenges do you see with this? Do you see a lot of positive pros? Do you see any cons or challenges?
Well, the biggest challenges we have right now is a lot of existing administrators aren't willing to move. We're seeing that all over the country, that people who are in good situations are just not willing to leave them. I guess I can understand that, particularly if they're in good political situations. We see more and more managers and administrators whose spouse has a career, mostly difficult to move. So this may be, we may approach a person and say, we think this is a terrific spot for you. And say, yeah, it's great. I'd be interested, but I can't move. You can't leave. Kids are in a school district that we really like. So that's one of the challenges that we find, is people just don't want to move. I gotta be honest, we're the state of Illinois. And when you look outside of the state of Illinois, it is a little harder to recruit people from neighboring states, because they need reputation in the state. Now, it's not impossible. We're just in, you know, just doing recruitment not too far west of here, and we have, we have four good candidates from, two from Indiana and one from Missouri. Both had Illinois roots. Both had either family here or had lived here and had some interest in coming back to Illinois. But that is, that is a challenge when you get outside of the state. You just have to, people just have to deal with it. Other than that, I don't see major obstacles. I think, I think you've got a lot to offer here. And I think, you know, there's a lot of things that I don't even know about, but I will, I will certainly use your staff and all of you to let me know, what are the, what are the real positive things that we can sell about this to you? Because it's all about selling. And we want to make sure that we put the best group forward.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Do you need us to hang around, or?
You don't have to. No, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay. That's, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim. Saving the best for last.
So a little plug in for WHR. I think that Heidi first started in '09, you said, right?
Yes.
That firm, it's built up to be the place to go for a situation like this. People that are involved in an organization that they're very active in, it's critical people that, I guess, for that, I'll say to my-
I'll say it with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To get you to get out of retirement, come back.
No, no, I like my airbrush.
So on the aqua front, I'm Jim Blatter from Aqua. I'm gonna give you quick updates. We're on track for October 1st. Everything's going well. In fact, we had meetings with Marcie and Stacy, with our building folks, getting through some of the things. So it seems to be on track. And in fact, a question was asked about the tenant versus the landlord. The bill does stay with the tenant. So I think the landlord would be happy about that. So basically, the way you have it situated right now will be the same. So I did talk to Stacy about that.
Okay.
September 12th, we have scheduled the open house, the educational, informational thing, similar to what we did before, prior to the agreement. So we're doing another one, which is nice to get this, it's about two and a half weeks before the closing. We're gonna get the message out that we're putting together our social media kind of thing, that we could post out there, get it on the Facebooks and text and get it out. I know Mary said you can't pick up the paper, so we'll get the message out the best we can over the next few weeks. Words seemed to spread last time quickly on the social media. It seems like that's almost the place to go nowadays, to spread that word. We have a six to eight.
Six to eight, September 12th, in the Commons area at the Peatone High School.
Thank you for scheduling that. Appreciate that. So one of the things, first, you know, say we close October 1st. Right now, we have a contractor set ready to go for October 2nd to start cleaning the water tower. So really show a presence to the community that, hey, we're out here. We'll have our vehicles. And Jim, we're gonna do a vehicle with a little on, just so everybody knows, hey, you know, we're here. You need something, we'll take care of it. So hopefully, we might be taking care of the water.
Yeah.
But we'll see. If it's there, we need to take care of it, we'll take care of it. But I know you guys are doing the best you can. So as far as the pipeline and the water source change, we identified the route, for the most part, that we're starting with. Reached out for their drilling. Only four parcels. There's still be the south side of the-
Peatone Beach Road.
Peatone Beach Road, right. We're identifying the four parcels on the south of it. In fact, you know, I'll pass this down. You guys just pass this on. You can see the proposed route right now. A lot depends, I guess, the one parcel of the boom guy owned all of that. So he's one. Our horn will have most of this right there. So they've reached out to all four of them. One of them is in a trust with 17 investors or something. There's a lot of them. First thing they ask, how much, right? How much for these? And right, so that's okay. Trying to make it as simple and easy as possible with the pipeline that we, we just finished going from Mantino up to University Park, so we'll pay the same price. If you want here, the attorney they use is very fair. It's very, very fair. And we thought, hey, you know, it's already set precedent. That dollar number's there. We still use the property. It's not gonna be anything negative for us, because the property actually will be beneficial to them. So when they do, you know, the water will be right in front of it. So we've had good feedback from them. So Troy is taking a leap from Robinson Engineering, him and his team. him and his team, so they've done a great job, so we're just gonna keep pushing forward, and assuming that the property owners seem to be cooperating, then we'll start the design right away and actually get the permit.
That's Harlem.
If for some reason there's a, there's a hiccup in work, one thing, we'll move to the other side, we'll get the job, and we'll do it. With water, it's a little bit easier, you don't have to worry about gravity, it's all the pressure, she can kind of move it along if you have to, so. But it's, it's on track, love to get going right away, so hopefully we get these things all settled in the next 30 days, which would be fantastic. Assuming nobody fights it and does anything, but that's when we'll change the route, that's all. But it's going well. Any questions? It's really, you know...
For the, for the open house, can you guys make sure you bring great information and comparisons to the surrounding communities?
I like, was that a...
Yeah, that's gonna be a big topic, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
And I've supplied, you know, the newspaper with all the information that I've had, too.
But even though we've been talking about it for two years, I think...
Right, no, they have that, no, absolutely, and that was, and that's the purpose, and that's the purpose of, of doing it, you know? And Jim and I had talked about that this morning, too, so...
And if there's any groups, any deal with the chairman at one time, does any group that you guys know that would like us to do a presentation at, or somebody wants us, we're more than happy to do it.
I just want to alleviate any suspicions that we're doing anything sinister. I mean, I think everybody's been up for it and the cards face up, so we just want to continue that.
I think this board and the mayor, you guys have done several, easily my name, through acquisitions, this has been very, very transparent, very open, you went out of your way to make sure that the public informed and, you know, so doing, even doing this extra open house, it's, we're trying to get a message out there, so, you know, come on, January 1st of 2020, people still say I didn't know anything about, but we're doing the best we can, and we're gonna try to continue to educate the public and be out there and do the same thing, so...
I mean, I think we'd be valuable even to schedule something, you know, next fall...
Oh, for sure.
Before, before the rates come up, and just, it's, you know, like, how, how are we doing, you know, the first year that we've had the system, you know, any concerns, and then, you know, get the rates again, you know?
Right, I think we'll do that a couple times next year, for sure.
Well, and the Tribune wrote that series of articles that kind of added a little bit of confusion to this issue, so we want to try to clean that up the best we can.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That is a great idea, and I think the more we have, the smoother it will go, and we break great impacts coming in, so, you know, by then they're gonna have the nice water, not gonna be this often early, they're not gonna need to buy bottled water, but sometimes it takes a little time for them, the residents to realize that, too, they're so used to, they don't wanna get in stuff, and if you don't notice them when they're washing their hair, you don't know it's all set up and stuff, they don't need stuff. We went through in Mantino, you know, it went well, the people will go out, but Dr. March, I think that's a great idea, and maybe have a couple into your 20, in anticipation of 2020, I think that's a good idea. Besides that, we'll also be at the IML, have a booth where we're actually doing a session on Friday at 1 o'clock. Anyways, you guys know all about it, but...
Awesome.
Anything else?
Thank you, Jim, appreciate it. Tom, you have something?
Me?
Yes, you got three minutes.
Well, good, I was hoping that I could offer you guys all a break. If you haven't seen them already, there's sculptures over on the west side of the Village Hall property here. Not that you don't own the whole town, but I marked it over there this afternoon, so you guys all get a chance to maybe do a little touchy-feely, and I do appreciate it. We're getting here, and, you know, hopefully we can get things worked out and find a location for it to go. But thank you very much for your cooperation in finding us a home here in Peatone.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else have anything for the committee of the hall? Committee of the hall? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the hall.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Jones to adjourn the committee of the hall.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
March?
Yes.
Barker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Now...
Committee of the hall is adjourned, we will reconvene the regular village board meeting at 7 o'clock.